Mr. Reeve, Administration does recommend two additions to the agenda, 15-4 and 15-5, and that will be Section 261A of the Freedom, Information and Privacy Act under disclosure harmful to intergovernmental relations. It also includes a delegation at 3:00 PM.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Michelle's moving it with the additions. Everybody's good? Okay, that's carried. No public hearing adoption of the minutes. Everybody read them? They're on your...
The adoption of the October 7th minutes, to be specific.
So, here we go. Oh, yeah. Do we do, sorry? Oh, I was on 4.1, so. October 7th, council meeting minutes. Robin's moving. Everybody read them? You're good with them? It's carried. 4.2, October 27th organizational minutes. Lloyd's moving them. Any questions on them? That's carried. Nothing for 6, 7, 8.1. Ms. Brown.
Thank you through the chair. This afternoon, we are pleased to present bylaw 2025-23, which is a bylaw to establish a subdivision and development authority. Council had directed staff to return to council with a draft subdivision and development authority bylaw for council consideration. The proposal would be that council would, through the bylaw, transfer subdivision and development authority from the municipal planning commission to Cypress County Council effective January 1st, 2026. Council meetings would begin with subdivision and development permit requests. There are several advantages to council holding subdivision and development authority. Number one, council has been elected by the residents of the county. One of the key aspects to long-term municipal viability and long-term planning is the authority and the ability to directly control from the council table development in the municipality. Secondly, increased customer service. The municipal planning commission meets monthly. As council meets twice monthly, subdivision and development applications will have multiple opportunities to be considered. This is a significant increase in the county's level of service with no corresponding increase in cost. And thirdly, decreased costs results in the transfer of the authority to council from the planning commission with the corresponding elimination of the commission will see a reduction on cost of approximately $27,000 annually. This reduction is all-inclusive of per diems, mileage, meals, and other ancillary cost. The disadvantage to the creation of council as the authority lies in the perception that council is removing public participation from the planning process, as the member-at-large would no longer be required to serve as the authority. This, however, is mitigated by the fact that the subdivision and development appeal board is staffed by a majority of members-at-large. In addition, the public has opportunity to participate in the planning process by way of a public hearing in the planning process. With the passage of bylaw 2025-24, it will require an amending bylaw to the land use bylaw. If council is to pass first reading of an amending bylaw, the public hearing would be scheduled for December the 2nd. In terms of cost and source of funding, costs will be absorbed into the regular council expense with no additional cost and will result in the annual cost saving of approximately $27,000 per year. In terms of provincial legislation, under Section 623 of the Municipal Government Act, it states that a municipality must by bylaw establish both a subdivision and development authority. In reference to council's strategic plan, bylaw 2025-23 aligns with council's goals to continue providing effective planning services and prioritizing economic growth and diversification by identifying land for business growth and for expansion. The following is on an exhaustive list, however, the following strategic priorities are supported: highway commercial development, residential development, environmental stewardship, marketing and promotion, and in addition to increased operational capacity. It is Administration's recommendation. It's a five-part recommended motion. Firstly, that council move first reading of bylaw 2025-23. Secondly, that council move second reading of bylaw 2025-23. Thirdly, that council moves unanimous consent to have third reading. And fourthly, that council move third reading of bylaw 2025-23. In addition, we will seek a moving of first reading of bylaw 2025-24, which would be the amending bylaw to the land use bylaw, which will require a public hearing on the 2nd of December. That concludes my presentation through the chair, and pleased to take any questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Brown?
I do.
Yeah?
Through the chair. There are quite a few other counties doing this.
Through the chair, we did do an analysis of comparison, and it's about a 50-50 split. I think we're seeing more and more rural municipalities moving towards a council and administrative bylaw function and eliminating the planning commission. This isn't to say that this bylaw would remove Administration's authority either. What would be coming to council is subdivision applications and Class II discretionary uses under the land use bylaw that are presently going to the planning commission. However, council would still be assigned a certain level of authority to issue decisions.
Keith?
Mr. Ritz. Just a point for clarification. So, if, through the chair, if we, when we pass this, does that mean that we are getting rid of the municipal planning commission? We're eliminating that?
Yes.
Or is there, or is the workload getting split now? Just a point of clarification, because my understanding was initially we're getting rid of the municipal planning, bringing it to council. You just said something about splitting the load, so I'm kind of curious, what is meant by that?
Through the chair, to Council Ritz, I think what Ms. Brown was indicating was that the current work that Administration does and the level of authority council has given them will stay the same, and everything that currently goes to municipal planning commission would come to the development authority, which would be council. So essentially, the municipal planning commission would be gone. What Administration currently does would stay the same, and council would take over what the municipal planning commission is currently doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Troy.
So, this is going to increase council's workload? Like, sometimes MPC can go a couple hours, most of the time it doesn't, I realize that, but, especially when you get these big projects.
Well, one of the things that will do is, it'll be every two weeks instead of once a month. So, yeah, it'll give us a workload for two council meetings, but when you split that out, it should only be an hour for each one if you're... Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's... I'm good with that.
Blaine. I guess the only question I have, so would this help eliminate some of the red tape that's involved? Because sometimes a lot of this would come back to council, like, some of the decisions would come back to council anyways.
Through the chair, to Counselor Brost, absolutely. I think just the ability to have applications coming forward to dual council meetings throughout the month. In addition to that, though, it also gives council an opportunity to kind of dig into the land use bylaw, see what's in there, see if there's kind of repeat trends that are occurring. And if we're able to kind of close the gap on some of those base simmering issues, that gives you a more direct ability to influence those planning documents as well. So I think that's kind of dual part.
So, the way I understand it is, the applications would come to council, we would then either approve or reject the application, forward it to Al, and Al would then go to his staff and say, implement what the council has chosen to do. Is that about the way to sum it up?
Thank you through the chair to Counselor Proctor. Essentially, what would happen would be identical to a decision coming out of the MPC. Staff would treat that direction from MPC or from council if they were the development authority identically. So if there are things to be implemented, they would, staff would take that away and implement it, just like they would do today coming out of the MPC. It would just be a different body that would be giving those directions on an application.
Yep, fair enough.
Does anybody want to move? Everybody at once. Blaine's moving first reading.
I will move first reading.
Okay. Everybody's clear on that? Any questions? It's carried. Keith is moving second reading. Any questions at all? Mr. Proctor.
Sometimes you get hit twice. We're like, she bang on him.
That's carried. Need a motion to move, to have unanimous consent for third. Robin is making that motion? That's carried. Need a motion to have third. Michelle is moving third. That's carried. Okay, I need a motion now for first reading of bylaw 2025-24. Everybody's clear? We're done with 23? This is for the next one, and it's first reading so that we can have the open or public hearing on the 2nd of December. Keith is moving that. Any questions? That's carried. Thank you, Ms. Brown. 9.1, Recreation Board capital funding requests. What's that?
Nothing. All of it.
Mr. Cartwright.
Thank you, members of council. I feel like I might need a lift on the podium here.
Kaylee?
Kaylee was the model they used for the decision. Thank you for members of council. I have the 2025 Recreation Board capital grants in front of you again today. As you may recall, dating back to June and into July, we had different discussions on approvals of certain portions of the grant requests that did come in. We have a number that are still outstanding. However, in that time, we have had some new information that I just wanted to highlight to council. So since the last report, the Urban and District Agricultural Society has received an agricultural society's infrastructure revitalization program grant in the amount of $78,400 for updates to the washrooms and the creation of female change room. So that was basically the same project that they were requesting funds for as well. Also, I didn't have it on there, but council may also recall $4.5 million for capital upgrades to the urban and district sportsplex. Also, we have received, or part of the operating grants going forward, so starting in 2026 for the operational grants, Dunmore Equestrian Center now gets $25,000 a year. So just some reminders on that. I also did note, after the report had been published here, clarification on the Diamond Jubilee request. Council had that being funded from the community aggregate payment levy, as well as topped up with the building replacement reserve fund. So in actuality, for recreation capital grant funding, we do have actually more than the $23,991.25 that I've listed in the report. It actually would be also an additional $92,000, so somewhere in the vicinity of $110,000 would be remaining for the 2025 capital grant funds. So the motion of the, I guess the direction I'm looking for today is approval of either the Dunmore Equestrian Society request of $86,254.27 for completion of the Community Ranch Arena, as well as the Elkwater Park Golf Club for the clubhouse flooring and door replacements of $12,959, the Urban Ag Society bathroom and hockey change room updates for $49,000, the Jenner Hall for north room renovations, the roof foundation interior update, and the Table Rock Roping Club for shade structures, including bleachers and tables, for $10,346.26. Mr. Chair, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cartwright.
I just have a question to the chair. What was that number again that you said, 92? And what was the full amount of budget that we have left in?
I'd ask somebody to use the calculator really quickly, but $92,488.75 plus $23,991.25. So roughly $115,000-ish?
Great.
Is what's left.
Is what's left, correct.
Is actually what's left.
Yep. With a total ask of $166,000. Still over budget. Just as a reminder, though, to the Urban Ag Society, with the successful application for the other grant, covers the majority of that project, too.
Mr. Hawke.
I got quite a few questions. That, I thought the Jenner Hall, that's different than the rink, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, different facility.
And I thought with Table Rock, I thought we had removed that one.
I don't know, we discussed it earlier.
I don't think so.
We discussed moving for the next recreation policy update of looking at using an inter-ministerial collaboration framework with special areas for recreation facilities.
Then the bathroom and hockey change rooms, but they got a grant for some of that, but not all of it.
Yeah, there'd be, I believe the grant asked them to cover 10%-ish, so they did cover the majority of the project.
So, they don't need the 49, then? No, but if they got the grant for it, then they don't need the 49.
Correct.
Correct. Dunmore Equestrian Center, they keep... I'm not going to get shot, but the problem I have there is we don't, they do not own that land that that building is on. They're making payments always on it. And that becomes an issue, that we're using taxpayers' dollars to keep building something on land for a community, for an association that they don't own. That's a tough one there. Because we've gave them a lot already. Any other thoughts? Or just me?
Yep. Sorry, Michelle, I didn't see your hand up.
That's okay. Through the chair. I kind of agree with Shane. And now that we have got the Equestrian Center on for $25,000 a year, I don't want to give them any more money. Like, they're, according to their sheets and whatever they got in here, they spent what they made. They have the money to cover it. I don't know why they're asking us to do it, but that's just my opinion. I am not in favor of the Equestrian Center being up there. Would have been different if we weren't giving them $25,000 a year, but the fact that we are, I'm good with that. And what else is up there? Well, I gotta think on the rest of it.
Mr. Proctor.
I had a meeting with them during my campaign, and, because one of the ladies is in my riding. I think what they really need is some help refinancing. They're financed very, very poorly for the property. And that's the feeling that I got from it, and I advised them that I would be willing to help, but of course, I also think that it's in Dan's riding, and I'd have to work with him on that. But refinancing, especially with interest rates dropping the way they are, will help them out a tremendous amount.
Most likely, yeah, but that's a different project, a different topic. We gotta deal with this right now on what we're going to give away today, because we need to sum it up. Blaine, hold on, Blaine.
I've been saying to Shane, and I...
You turned your mic off.
Oops. I have the same thoughts as Shane and Michelle. If you look at the way they set up their grant, and I had this same conversation with those guys at Dunmore, I mean, they balanced their sheet on their expense and their income. I think we've gone to bat as far as helping them with their operating with the $25,000, and I think they're quite comfortable with that, and I think at this time, I think that we should just leave it at that. When it comes to further financing, if they need help, that's, like I said, another conversation that we'd have to talk about, because that goes into a totally different financial part of the, part of council's budget. So I would be just, you know, I'm fine with not giving them any money for, you know, for this grant. And the other ones that have applied, that we, if we have that money, I think we can give them their 50% that we've done, the golf course, the Jenner Hall, and the Table Rock Roping Club. I'd be fine with them.
Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. On the Urban Ag Society, so they got the one for, let's call it 80 grand, and then this is another 50. Just because they got a grant for it, how does that match up against what the actual renovations cost? I'm just kind of curious. I know when I look at the four and a half million that we've allocated for that improvement, I kind of have a suspicion that we're probably high on our cost estimate. I'm hoping that we're really high on that, that we can get that for significantly cheaper. I'm kind of curious what, you know, potential... I just, I don't... Renovations cost a lot these days, and I don't know that 80 grand is going to do what they need it to. I'm curious if you've heard anything from them on what, one, I guess it's our building, too, so they can't really do any renovations without running it by us. So how does the cost estimate compare to the actual project?
Yeah, thank you through the chair to Counselor Kripriwate. The quote that they've got actually is quite dated now, so it's from basically the beginning of the year, so, and they did have a couple quotes, and some different contractors come in. Supply, I think, that we know has increased for a lot of plumbing fixtures, which is basically what the main part of the grant is. So it's, I would say, likely, so they, we're looking at a $98,000 quote. It's likely with updated estimates now that'll come back slightly higher. It's hard to say kind of how much until you go out and have that aggressive competitive bidding process, but there's a risk that prices would have increased substantially over the past, say, six to eight months.
Just in follow-up to that, seeing that that is older, and we kind of looked at this originally back early September, have we gone back to, you know, Jenner Hall, Table Roping Club, the Equestrian Center, to see whether or not they've been successful in raising any funds in the meantime? Like, I know we kind of tabled this until now. It's a lot of time that's gone by. I'm just kind of curious if they're, technically, this might be considered an old ask by this point.
That's a good point, and again, through the chair to Counselor Kripriwate, have not had any additional conversations with them since. Basically gave an update, but that we were kind of delayed with the capital expenditures, and nothing since.
Mr. Want.
The Dunmore Equestrian Center Society, I know we've talked quite a bit about it, but I think last time I asked what, how much money we've been giving them since three years ago, and I believe it's 2.1 or 2.3, something like that, between levies and cash and support.
Are they going to be up there?
And I like the idea of the $25,000 a year to keep supporting them, but I think we've done plenty to support them. So I'm not for giving them the rest of, what is it, the 86, what they're asking for. I'm good with Elkwater. I thought in urban, they weren't going to do any repairs in it until we did the interior or did the ice hockey rink, because I thought if they did that and we had more to do, like repair piping or something, that we'd end up ripping it out. Or are we going to go ahead and let them repair it?
Through the chair to Counselor Want, coordination of the two projects is something that we've been talking about with the Ag Society already. The actual idea would be that during the plant shutdown and removal of the ice surface is actually a great time to go in and do the washroom upgrades as well. Can be separate contractors and separate contracts, but having that facility closure makes it a prime time to go and rip out and redo the plumbing and the change room portions. The scope of the ice plant and the slab itself really does keep it to sort of the backside of the building and away from the change rooms and, other than some tie-ins potentially with heat recovery units or some of the boiler system.
Okay. I'm good with it, Doug.
Ms. McKenzie?
No, I'm good. Lloyd, ask my question.
So as I revisited this, as I went over the agenda, a question came to my mind. Because we are given a request, does that mean we have to give them what they ask?
No.
So that was, as I looked at every one, I go, what happens if we said no? You know, I mean, I'm not trying to be a bad guy here, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider each one on its own merit, but if we don't have it, or, you know, just, or even if we do have it, does that mean we have to give it? I mean, there's something about saving it a little bit for, and I know there's some major projects coming down the road, and we're going to change some things, and I'm okay with all that. It just, some of these are pretty big asks, and I have to agree with Shane, Counselor Hawke, on the fact of giving money to somebody who doesn't own their, you know, doesn't own the land that it's sitting on. It's probably not a good thing, but I understand the value of the, the value of the center and what it brings to the, to the county. So I'm always open to look at it, so I'm in favor of going ahead with some measure of granting some of this request, so just what that will be, I don't know yet, but we'll, I do, I do agree in looking at it.
So one thing to think about, the Urban Ag Society, they, their account, I believe Blaine said last time, they have like $300,000 in the bank. So let them do their renovation, and if they're short come the end of the year on run-ins, something, we can look and help them, but when you consider we've given them $75,000 a year for the past, I don't know, I've been on here 12 years, so that's $1 million we're giving them for operating, and they still have $300,000 in the bank. have $300,000 in the bank, we've kind of already supported that and the money sitting there already instead of giving, giving more. Mr. Kerpy White.
I, I hear you on that, but kinda going back to when we had our, our budget meetings and our conversations about levels of service, I believe that there's a conversation that we have yet to have as well on how are we gonna be managing these facilities and making sure that, you know, operations and capital maintenance is being kept up with and that we're not waiting, you know, Irvin aside, you know, we have rec centers or community halls, even seven persons, that, you know, at what point do we look at that conversation? Because I believe that there's going to be some form of a hybrid model moving forward with Irvin as to how we intend on operating and maintaining, kind of going down the road. Do we need to have that conversation sooner than later so that we can, you know, look at it through that lens to determine how we allocate resources and funds? Heck, if we're going out to RFP, why wouldn't we be tying in that renovation into the RFP? You know, just because you have two funding sources doesn't mean that, you know, you can't pay the bill with two different funding sources. I think that we still need to have that discussion on what, you know, portion of maintenance we're taking on and what portion the, the groups that are operating the facilities are taking on.
Absolutely. That has to come in the future. But on the, on the screen in front of you right now is what we have, and we know that they have the money to cover these renovations at this point of time. So yes, you're very valid on what you say there, but we have to deal with this right here today. And are we gonna release another $49,000 to them, or are we gonna hold back? That's the question. But yes, we do need to get these other things to the table sooner than later, and I do believe that's gonna happen in the near future. Blaine.
One and last, one last comment. So with saying what both of you said, I, I mean, I don't believe in, I don't think that the $49,000 is applicable right now because they had the grant, but we did have the, we just had the conversation that we dragged our feet with this decision, which may have cost them some, some money as far as a new quote goes. So, and if we add, and I just did a little bit of math, I mean, if, if, they're out about $13,800 between the grant and what they're asking for. So if we wanted to just top up the $92,000 to the, like with 13-8 on, on this budget, I'd be quite comfortable with that. And that gives them incentive to, to keep doing their due diligence of what they've been doing as far as getting grants. I thought they did a great job by getting the grant in the first place to get the $78,000 to do this renovation. That is needed. Like you could, there's pictures in your package that you can see that are needed. So I don't see a problem giving them, we have $116,000. Granted, we don't need to spend it all, like, key set. So if we can top up that, that $13,000 deficit potentially, and if it, you know, if it was, if it ends up being a little more, yes, they can make up the difference. But that way, we are giving them their $92,000 at the end of the day. So that would be my recommendation, that we, we give Elkwater, Irvin Egg Society 13-8, tops up to 92, or whatever that number, the official number boils down to, Jenner and Table Rock. And that, and that will secure their, all those requests and we could get this off the books.
Mr. Proctor, you have a question?
I agree with, with Counselor Brost, that that's a very good approach.
Mr. Hawk.
I agree with Blaine, except for Table Rock, I'd maybe only do 50%, let them fundraise the other 50.
It's already at 50.
Is it?
Yes. Those requests are at 50.
Yeah, they can still fundraise more. I-
Yeah. Yeah, it, they're-
That is 50. Okay, never mind. I haven't had to double check.
And Table Rock is in Jenner again?
Yep.
Is it, it's out of Cypress County?
Yep.
Yep, that's actually in the county.
Table Rock, no. That's down at the river.
Right.
That's at the river.
Thought we were gonna stop doing out-of-county stuff. Yeah. We-
My only question is, we're going to the ICF, we're not there yet. This was a request from before. So are we gonna consider it one last time, or are we gonna not consider it one last time?
That's what we said about the $92,000 for the other one, though. This is the one last time we're gonna do out of-
Yeah, this is a part of the same, that same conference. It's a part of the same ask.
Yes and no, but it is part of the same ask, but it's, guys, come on, it's outside of Cypress County. I know we all say that it, it needs to go to the ICF and we have to stop. We can't keep saying, let's go forward, let's do this, we'll look at it down the road. We gotta make a decision and stop. I'm not trying to be mean about it, but if we don't do it, it's just gonna continuously keep going on and on and on. It needs to go to the ICF and that's where it needs to go. Michelle.
Just wondering if I can make a motion.
Sure.
To do what Blaine said with the Egg Society, with the $13,000, whatever that number is, the Elkwater Golf or Park and Golf Club, I don't mind, then Jenner and Table Rock, go just leave them until they go to the ICF and nothing for the Dunmore Equestrian Center. I think that's a lot of words for a motion, but I hope you get it.
Oh, Trudy's got that written out already. 13-8 was the correct number?
I would like somebody to actually do the correct math. I was just, whatever the correct math is, because their ask is actually, so $49,000 times two-
98,000.
Is 98, minus 78 is actually 20. So I would, like I said, I wanted to top up the whole-
20.
Okay, so it's 20,000.
20,000.
On the fly.
Up to 20,000, yes.
Up to 20.
That's right.
Then we're okay with the Elkwater Golf Course for the 12, 9?
I think it would be 19,600.
Yeah, and the other three are out.
All three of them?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that is the motion.
That's what she's made.
Never call the Table Rock, go to ICF, and nothing for Dunmore Equestrian Center.
And it's only 20,000 instead of 49 for Irvin Egg.
Yep. Can we have that up there?
Irvin Egg is 20.
But we really helped with their rink. We really helped with their rink.
So that drops? Yes. Do you, are you gonna put it up on the board for us, or you wanna read it back?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. We're, we're just working it, trying to condense Counselor McKenzie's motion.
As said earlier today in our meeting, we need that word perfect.
Yes.
So take a seat, Joe.
Is that why Leslie Ann's getting help?
I think that's a fair, I think it's really fair.
I don't, I, did I get a point of privilege, perhaps? I'd like to introduce Jody Phillips, our new Recreation and Community Association Coordinator. So somebody that could do a much better job at having requests and reports for council on these items.
I'd say the bar's not very high, but I'll be polite.
Or the podium.
Or the podium, yeah. Welcome, Jody, to Cypress County.
Where do you live?
Madison, huh?
That's a good answer.
That's my question. Dunmore. Oh, there. That is about time.
Yep.
Can't read it.
Yep, that's what it was. Lot of last words, but that's what I said.
Can't read it.
It says that council approved the 2025 capital grant request totaling $19,600 to the Irvin Egg Society and $12,000, I can't read that number.
959.
To Elkwater Park and Golf Club.
Should it be Recreation Board Request?
I would suggest the funding source would be through the Recreation-
Under just Capital Act.
Board, yeah.
Good catch. But we do have a capital side on the Recreation.
Yes. That'd be amended motion?
Is it friendly?
Friendly.
There's no such thing as that, remember? I'd have been losing this wide rate, especially with, especially with Shane.
It's a demand.
It's a demand.
It's a demand motion.
Mm-hmm, more than that.
Did you buy a brand yet?
So where's your office gonna be?
I have it, actually. I got it approved, I got my plane. Where do you think, put a, a brand up?
Long as there's no stairs.
Said to show the community.
It's okay with me.
Now he can find you.
Yeah, I can, can never find you. Two more stairs.
We told him the elevator's broken.
The motion reads that council approved the grant request totaling $19,600 to the Irvin Egg Society and $12,959 to the Elkwater Park Golf Club funded from Recreation Capital.
Okay, everybody's clear on that?
Well, I don't like the way it reads. I don't, I'll go with it.
Yeah. Anybody but Shane good with that?
I can't.
Okay, not seeing any comments? Vote. Holy- Okay, that's carried. Thank you, Mr. Cartwright. 10.1 Short Grass Library Budget. Ooh, new girl.
Ooh, newbie.
Let's go.
I'd be nervous.
Thank you through the chair. The 2026 Short Grass Library Budget Request. Administration is recommending approving the Short Grass, Short Grass Library Systems 2026 Revised Budget Request. The Short Grass Library System has submitted a revised 2026 Budget Request to account for an increase of $4,300 in projected revenues and a corresponding 100, just $100, oh my gosh. A corresponding $100 adjustment to its expenditures, therefore maintaining a budget, a balanced budget. You guys did approve the Short Grass Libraries 2026 Levy back in October with Resolution 2024-440. That council approves the Short Grass Library Systems municipal levy of $5.04 per capita in 2025 and $5.19 per capita in 2026, using the 2023 Alberta Municipal Affairs population figures of 7,524. Cypress County will be funding monies from the operating budget as part of the Cypress County's Library Board Budget. This goes back to the Libraries Act, Section 8 and 12.6, and the signed Short Grass Library Systems Agreement. So administration is recommending that council approves the revised 2026 Budget Request from the Short Grass Library Systems, reflecting an increase of $4,300 in revenue and an adjustment of $100 in expenditures, resulting in a balanced budget as presented.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions? Shane?
What is that $100 for?
That $100 is anything from increases to decreases in their budget. So they have increased, I draw it a couple notes here. They did increase their board conference travels. They also increased stuff with interviewing expenses. They increased some computer hardware photocopying charges. They had a decrease in building maintenance and a decrease in utility costs. So there's a few lines that they have adjusted on their expense side that it just ends up equating to being $100 of an increase. And their increase in revenues is from investments incomes, so stuff on interests, if they've got any GICs or something like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Come on, somebody else have some questions for us.
I can say good job. I mean, I'm on that board, so I know all, everything you said was right.
Any other questions? Somebody wanna make a motion? Shane?
Yep.
Recommended motion, you wanna read it off?
Yep. That council approved the revised 2026 Budget Request for, by the Short Grass Library System, reflecting an increase of $4,300 in revenue and an adjustment of $100 bill in expenditures, resulting in a balanced budget as presented.
Thank you. Any questions on that? That's the motion on the floor. Vote. That's carried. Okay, we're on to 11.1. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you through the chair. Big Marble Farms submitted a letter requesting a service level change on a section of Township Road 122 that is presently is gravel surfaced. The requested change in service level from gravel to oil coal mix will enhance Big Marble Farms' operation and mitigate dust issues to their operations and area residents along that road section. Big Marble Farms presently has oil surfacing along Township Road 122 east of the proposed section to Highway 3, as well as north-south on Range Road 63 encompassing their operations. And I'll just briefly go through the letter they, they, they sent in for their request, to whom they may concern. On behalf of Big Marble Farms, I am writing to formally request a change to the existing road surface along Township Road 122 adjacent to our property. Specifically, we are seeking the application of coal mix oiled surface over approximately 520 meters to be completed by county forces on a full cost recovery basis. Following recent discussions with Cypress County Administration, we understand that the service level adjustment falls outside the scope of current county policy and therefore requires county approval. We further acknowledge that a road use agreement will need to be established between Big Marble Farms and Cypress County. This agreement would address operational impacts related to both the original development over recent expansion and as well as the defined ongoing maintenance responsibilities for the oiled surface should this request be approved. The proposed improvement involves extending the current oiled section of Township Road 122 approximately 520 meters west, terminating roughly five meters past the northern neighbor's property line. This extension is intended to enhance roadway conditions for both the operation and residents, while improving safety and reducing dust and maintenance requirements along this corridor. Big Marble Farms remains committed to working collaboratively with Cypress County- Big Marble Farms remains committed to working collaboratively with Cypress County to ensure proper coordination with county contractors, full compliance with county standards, and completion of all necessary agreements prior to implementation. We respectfully request the county's consideration and approval of this cold mix application. We greatly appreciate your attention to this matter and look forward to working together on this important roadway improvement. So Big Marble Farms will enter, would enter into a formal road use agreement with the following noted conditions. Big Marble Farms will cover all costs associated with installing the proposed oiled section of road. Big Marble Farms will cover all future maintenance and new oats, on the new old section and the existing old section, or section encompassing their operations. Big Marble Farms will designate a new haul route using Highway three wholesome road in a small chunk of Range Road seventy-three to their present storage, material storage site. The new road will avoid intense hauling along the Township Road one twenty-two. So this, under the MGA Division two roads, Cypress County has the direct control and care and management of all local roads within its boundaries. Reference to the strategic plan under balanced financial goals in entering into an agreement for the installation and future maintenance costs on a full cost recovery basis for services will align with this goal. Council, we approved three options. The first option would be that council approved the service level change request to place approximately five hundred and twenty meters of oiled bound surfacing along Township Road one twenty-two as requested by Big Marble Farms on a, on a full cost recovery basis and enter into a road use agreement for future maintenance costs. Number two, that council deny this request. And number three, that council provide further direction. I've included a few diagrams to show the, the area and the proposed road. If you can just scroll down, Leslie Ann, please. Oh, sorry about that. It should be rotated that way. Is there any way to rotate? So as you can see, there are Highway three along the, from the south to the northeast. The black section is the pavement that goes up from Highway three up Range Road sixty-three that we did about two years ago as part of a bigger project on the south side of the highway. The red section to the north is existing oil. And the expansion of Big Marble Farms is, was the sunshine greenhouses to the northeast. That oil runs all the way up that quarter line and oil goes from that intersection east, or sorry, yeah, east to Highway three where the Alberta Transportation upgraded the intersection about four years ago. There is a section of oil that runs west of the intersection for about three hundred meters. And then the section we're talking about is the dash section along there, which is five hundred and twenty meters. Okay, the next diagram drawing? Okay. Perfect. No problem. So this diagram shows their intended haul road. Previously, they were hauling along Township Road one twenty-two, which is a gravel road and causing a dust, dust concerns and intense hauling and then going north on Range Road seventy, seventy-one. So now, now they're intending to go Highway three, which is the highway up to wholesome road. And then just a small section, you can see in the, the, the top left corner there, there's material storage site there. So that's a big difference from what they've been doing in the past hauling down one twenty-two. And yeah, that's my presentation. If there's any questions, take it.
Yeah, through the chair, if we can. So all that other oiled road, there's no agreement with them right at this present time?
Through the chair, presently, there's no agreement on file from the development agreement, the original development agreement for the original development. So this would correct that.
So that would wrap up the whole or just that five hundred and twenty meter section?
Everything.
Everything?
Yes.
Everything in red, correct?
Correct, except for the portion from the intersection to Highway three.
East part.
East-west part there. That, they're, they're not using that road at all for their access in their operation.
So just where the arrows are?
Correct.
Go ahead, Shane.
So that material that they're hauling up to that storage site, is it approved storage site or is it something that can be going to the compost center in Red Cliff?
I'll direct that question to our general manager of planning.
Thank you for the question through the chair. We've been working extensively with Big Marble Farms for several years on a solution to their, their waste. We've, we've convinced them and we've worked with them to begin hauling their non-compostable materials to the landfill. So we verified with the regional landfill that those materials are in fact going there. It's the, it's the compostable materials, so the, the greens and the vines that are actually able to be spread, no different than manure. So it's regulated under Alberta Environment, it's allowed under the Waste Control Regulation. However, I think that stockpiling that waste on that corner is not their, their solution either. So they are continuing, I think, to work with the landfill authority on costing in terms of, you know, water weight and so forth. So we're continuing on those conversations. This is essentially an interim relief until they're able to figure out a longer term plan.
So I just have one question on the east side of that there. I know there's not big trucks on there, but there's still a lot of vehicles going down there every day as just workers going in. Should that not be part of their, their responsibility too? I don't know how many hundreds of workers are driving in there a day on that road.
Through the chair, I can attest to, you know, their employees and how, how they go into the site. From my understanding, the improvement to the intersection for the heavy trucks and whatnot, that is their designated haul route for that. Outside of that, going to work shortcut, it's tough to track that and put that section of road onto their agreement.
Keith?
I just want to, to the chair, just for clarification, they are willing to put all the road in red except for that little section out of the road use agreement? So that would go from the number three up that mile or so and then to the west, including the dotted line. They're willing to put all that under the road use agreement? Or is it just the dash part?
Through the chair, it is all the area where they show the arrows in black and red there. So that section.
Okay. Joe?
I for one am thrilled with this if we finally get a road use agreement out of these guys. My question is, is that you had conditions on there? Is there any way you could put subject to annual review on those conditions as well? So that we have some way of keeping tabs on them to make sure that they're actually adhering to the road use agreement?
Go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Yes, we can make any sort of conditions there, annual inspection as, as far as the road, we'll be doing a regular inspection as part of our operations. And if any instances where we have rutting or whatnot through the year, it's gonna get dealt with at that time. But yeah, a year, we can, we can set up something where we revisit this with them in a year.
Well, if you're doing it all the time anyway, it's not really necessary. I was just more, you know, wondering about enforcement, if that would help. If it doesn't, we don't need it.
The road use agreement automatically, if we have to repair it, we repair it, send them the bill. That's, there's no argument about it, it's done. Mr. Proctor?
Yeah, I think with the twinning of the number three highway and the intersections all changing there, we're gonna be forced into doing something anyway. So if we can capitalize on an agreement now, it would be in our best interest.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Reeve? Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and to council. The lesson learned here, I think, should be that very difficult to go back on a development permit and suggest that we're now gonna ask them to look after the road, the east-west piece that intersects onto Highway three. These should have been captured in the original development permit. And the lesson learned is, is that all of these things need to be considered with the development permit, so we don't end up having to revisit them two, three years later. We are fortunate that Big Marble has come with a request that they wanna do something and we're able to kind of renegotiate parts of it. But had this been encapsulated in the original development agreement, we wouldn't even have to have this conversation today.
On that note, if we look at the original development permit on the, one on the north, that one was stated in that when it was the other company and they developed it, they had to haul to the, to the dump. They could not dump their, their waste anywhere else. So when these guys bought this, that should have carried over, but that's a different argument on a different day. Somebody wanna make a motion for this? Keith, you're making number one. That the council approved the service level change request to place approximately five hundred and twenty meters of oil bound surface along the, whoa. Along the one twenty, Road one twenty-two, Township Road one twenty-two as requested by Big Marble at a full cost recovery and enter into a road use agreement for future maintenance costs. Any questions or comments? Vote. Okay, our delegation is here, so we will take a quick, oh, is it okay if we take a quick five-minute break? I'm guessing what the guy, the guy sitting beside me asking for it probably wants it. Quick five-minute break and then we'll get to the delegation. Quick five-minute break, and then we'll get to the delegation.
Good afternoon.
Laura Jears.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Reeve Hamilton, council, and staff. I really appreciate the opportunity to come back to you again this year to just give you a little update on what we've been up to at the shelter and upcoming projects and all good things like that. So thank you to all of you. My name is Natasha Carvalho. I'm the executive director at the Medicine Hat Women's Shelter. I've been there about 19 years now. I have with me Callie McGugan, who is my communications and fundraising staff, as well as Ryan Thorburn, who is my president of the board. This month is Family Violence Prevention Month. We have it declared every year by Mayor Clark for the City of Medicine Hat. Maybe it's something we could do out here as well. But we kick off the month by tying purple ribbons around town. We do this primarily to bring awareness to the issue of family violence. And as you can see on that slide, we've done, where you're doing a few things. We were at the Tigers game this weekend, and we got a few events coming up. It's really important to us as a shelter organization to make sure that we're bringing awareness to the issue of family violence, not just always out there campaigning and fundraising, which we are often doing as well, but also so people understand the need for the work that we do and understand, like we always say, you might not experience family violence yourself, but you might know somebody who does. And so it's just really important for us that you know what services are available and where you can refer to people. We are a 24/7 support shelter, so meaning we are open 24/7. We have staff all around the clock. We're nonprofit. We don't charge. We're gender inclusive, and we surround, we serve all of Medicine Hat, as well as the surrounding areas, including Cypress County, up to Oien, down to Brooks and across. So in that, we offer quite a continuum of services. I'm just going to give you the elevator short speech of it, so don't take up too much of your time, but we run two shelters at, through the Medicine Hat Women's Shelter. One is an emergency shelter called the Phoenix Safe House, which is a short-term crisis shelter. People can stay for up to three weeks. People do stay longer. And we run Musasa House, which is our second-stage shelter, which is a longer-term stay. Families can live there for up to a year. We also offer quite extensive outreach services for adults and children, and as well as a child and youth program, which includes a daycare on-site, as well as a summer camp day program for kids. Community education and awareness also is a really big program. We have it as a standalone program. Like I just said to you, it's important for us to make sure that we spread the word. Our 24/7 support not only includes, you can come to the shelter, but it also includes a helpline, a toll-free line, a text line, and a web chat line. We started that during COVID, when we realized there was a lot of individuals who were stuck at home in unsafe situations and needed a way to get ahold of us without being able to have to pick up a phone. And so text and web chatting worked way better for us and for them. Last year, numbers were a little lower, and if you remember from the previous year, that's primarily because we were completing the huge renovation on our emergency shelter, and we had, we moved off-site. We moved the clients off-site during that time as well. So we were still serving people. We just weren't able to serve as many people. But those who did come through, we made sure that they received a bed and all the supports that they need. Our services didn't change during that time. It just was a little more compressed. So you can see some of our numbers. We still receive a lot of calls on our helpline. Over 1,400 calls come through. That's not always people looking for shelter services. That's just people who are looking for somebody to talk to, to do some safety planning, just to get some advice onto how, you know, maybe to support a friend or a family member, as well as through the 24/7 text and web chat line. We see a lot of connections through that. A lot of times, those are younger adults who, you know, that's their primary mode of communication, as well as sometimes harder to pick up the phone, easier to text, so we see that as well. And then you can see our numbers through our different shelters. We had a lot of kids in shelter over the year, over, almost over 100 children came through our various shelters, as well as through our outreach services. Outreach services are really important to us because it's a way for people to access services without having to come in and access the shelter. Not everybody needs a bed, but sometimes somebody needs somebody to talk to and maybe some safety planning and to figure out some planning. So Phoenix Safe House, which is our main shelter, which is the one we just renovated, is a 30-bed emergency shelter. We have been able to now increase our capacity and add 15 bedrooms to that space. One of the biggest things, if you remember from our last year when we were in front of you, was that we really wanted to put bathrooms in all of the bedrooms for the families so that they had some ability to just take care of themselves. It gives them some dignity and respect while they're staying with us, that they have their own facilities in the room. So we were able to do that, and all the bedrooms now have their own little bathroom with them. And on the main floor, we were able to access, to add three more accessible bedrooms. As you can appreciate, people who are coming to a shelter are coming to a shelter because they've been injured, and they can't always do stairs. And that was part of our push for our renovation, is that we wanted to make everything accessible. So we were able to do a lot of renovations with that, to make things more accessible in the different capacities that we offer. So approximately 21-day stay is actually what's mandated by the government. We have a little flexibility around that. People do stay with us for a lot longer. There's a lot of, not a much accessible or affordable housing in communities, so people need to stay with us a bit longer till they can kind of get back on their feet, figure out what they're doing, if that's where they're at, if they're going to look for new space. It's a secure and monitored facility, as we said, 24/7. We provide for basic human needs when people come in, meals, clothing, hygiene. While you're there, you'd be working with a worker, offering, you'd get one-to-one support. There's also group programs that you can take part in. We make sure that everyone has a danger assessment when they come in. A danger assessment assesses lethality, so that's really what we're assessing for, to make sure that you're, how safe are you and how safe do you need to be, and what does that look like in terms of future safety planning. We have a pet safekeeping program that we do with the SPCA, where they take pets, if somebody's coming into shelter and has a pet. A lot of times, that's the biggest reason people are scared to leave their pets behind. Pets are family, and they don't want to leave them, and they're worried that something will happen to them. So we have a great program with the SPCA that they will keep the clients' pets while they are with us at the shelter. This is our newly renovated facility. As you can see, it looks wonderful. Some of you were able to come for the grand opening and had a bit of a tour. If those of you, the rest of you weren't able to make, we'd love to show you the space. So as you can see, there's a picture of a bathroom. That's our daycare area, our new education and group spaces, bedrooms with bathrooms, and our new reception area. It's just wonderful, really, to have all this light and space, and just to be able to have created an environment where people feel comfortable when they walk in the door. We've worked really hard to make it not feel as institutional and as heavy. It's heavy stuff that's going on, so to make it as nice as possible for families when they live with us. I'm really sorry. I don't have a picture of your beautiful courtyard. I just realized that's not in there. So thank you so much. We just wanted to take that opportunity to say thank you very much for your donation of money last year towards our courtyard. Some of you who were there, we had our grand opening actually out in the courtyard, so it was really wonderful. There's a beautiful playground out there and a secured space for families. They spend a lot of time out there. We've been back in the shelter since the end of August, and the clients came in shortly after that, and they've just been loving being back there. My window of my office faces out onto that courtyard, and you can hear the kids running around and laughing and having such a good time playing and just feeling safe for the first time in a really long time. And so it's quite wonderful to hear that. So thank you very much. Musasa House, which is right next door to our emergency shelter, is our second-stage shelter. We're the only shelter, second-stage shelter south of Calgary. So that shelter is very busy. We get a lot of referrals to that shelter because that's the only one, if you want to have a longer-term stay. So as you can see from the picture, there, it's a row of townhouse units. There are two-story, three-bedroom townhouse units. We can accommodate families of very many different sizes, moms with one kid, moms with seven kids, whatever it works like. We make it work. So it's similar there. You live there, and you can participate in group programming. You'd have a staff member who'd be your one-to-one worker. The kids receive support as well. The kids can access the daycare, and all the staff work together to make sure that those families are supported during their time stay there. The benefit of Musasa House is that families now have a bit of a longer term, sorry, longer time to kind of get back on their feet and catch their breath and figure out what their next steps are. And if that looks like going back to school to do upgrading, or looking for work, or figuring out what school your kids are going to go to next, it gives you that time to sort of make those plans. And the biggest thing for us, too, is that we know that a lot of times, families or women will go back to their partner because they don't have any other options, because they're tied to them financially, or that's the only way they can kind of make it work. But this way kind of gives people that time to sort of take the time to realize that they can really make it work, and what supports could we offer to make sure that you can get back onto your feet, if that's where you're ready to be. Outreach used to be off-site, and we've been able to move outreach back on-site now with our new renovation, so it's really wonderful. It's a partnership with the Medicine Hat Police Service, and it's called the SVIT, which stands for Safe Families Intervention Team. It's a program where, when the police attend to a domestic call within 24 to 48 hours, we'll receive the names of the families who they attended to, and our staff will follow up with phone call to check in and make sure that they're doing okay, and to see if they would like some support, come in to talk to anybody, or whatever it is that they would like. We started that program, oh gosh, it's been almost 11 years now since we started that program, and it's been a really great way to access people who just didn't realize that there were other services out there, or thought perhaps that maybe they needed to come into the shelter to access a bed. Not everybody needs a bed, like I said, so some people just need somebody to talk to. And so that program has been really wonderful to be able to have that, and it's been great to have a partnership with the police service to make sure that we're getting to those families early in a timely manner. Sometimes when police attend to a situation, it might be the first time something's happened. So how wonderful if they can get support right away and, you know, be open to that. We also offer a program for people who are the abusers in those situations. If they're interested in coming in to talk to somebody because they're recognizing that they need to change their behavior and maybe want to work on some of those things, that's an opportunity for them as well. That's the Time for Change program, as you can see listed there. Children is a big part of what we do, and it's a big part of how we feel that we can change the trajectory on what family violence can look like in our community. We know that kids are impacted very early. We know that children can be impacted while they're still in utero. We want to get to them as soon as we can, and we don't want to just treat them as somebody who's just on the sidelines of the abuse. So as soon as children arrive at either of our shelters, they are offered one-to-one support. Their parents are offered the support they need. We work on a lot of attachment work to make sure we recognize that during crisis and trauma, that's the last thing that's sort of being able to be able to focus on, because poor moms are just in a flight-or-flight kind of survival method. So once they're at the shelter and they can catch their breath, we really just want them to be able to focus on building, rebuilding those relationships. So we do a lot of work on that. We have a daycare on-site as well, which is wonderful, available to anybody who accesses our services, and that's been really a godsend for families to be able to come and leave their children there while they're attending to appointments in the community, such as legal appointments or custody things and things like that, that you don't really want to have to drag your kids around to as well. So that's been really wonderful. So yeah, I just wanted to give you an update on that capital campaign. When we came before you, I think last year, it was an $8.5 million project, and we had two million set aside, and we had a goal of $6.5 million. So we've been able to raise almost $4.5 million of that, including your generous donation. So thank you very much. We're at just $2 million now. I say just because it's feeling not as insurmountable as the first one did. So we're really excited about that. The construction went according to plan. We were in and out in over, in two years, I guess, from start to finish, and we're back enjoying the facilities. And so it's been really wonderful to be able to be back on-site and to offer that to the families that we serve. So we're continuing to advocate for funding. I guess if there was any ask for you, it would be to just continue to advocate, if you can, for us, to provincial government and all levels of government, going forward up to federal even, just to let them know that, to keep us on their radar, to know that this is a service that we offer for all of Southeast Alberta, and the critical work that we do is really life-changing and is life-saving, if you will, and just that it's still important to us. I'm happy to take questions from the floor. Sarah Sidney?
Rob.
Awesome. Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Natasha. I love what you guys do. You know that. There's, over the last few years, there's been a lot more of, you know, things like youth suicide that has been on the rise and things like that. And I've talked to some people and seen other kind of movements on the side of urgent care for people that are in distress. And I'm just wondering, like, with your program, how do you, do you guys have any kind of availability or opportunities for mothers or their kids that are struggling with something like that? It kind of like a, you know, short timelines versus getting put on waiting lists that, you know, when there's something that's, you know, obviously in an abuse kind of a situation, it's now or never kind of a deal. And I'm just curious if there's anything like that that's integrated with what you guys do.
Yeah, thank you for the question through the chair. What, a lot of the work that we do, we are definitely seeing more youths coming forward who are needing that support with their parents. And we have been working, obviously, mental health is really compromised when you are in a family violence situation, and we worry about that, and we, and that is a big focus of what we try to work on. While we're not mental health experts in the work that we do, we do partner with a lot of agencies to make sure that they're getting those supports. But within our organization, our staff are very focused on making sure that those kids are connected with a worker, have somebody to talk to. You know, we've done a lot of, if there is kids who have suicidal ideation, we've done a lot of safety planning around that and making sure that they're supported around that and getting the services that they need. We work really closely with the schools to make sure as well that everybody's on top of what's going on for that particular child, to make sure that they're getting the care that they, that they need as well. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Proctor?
Yeah, my daughter worked for the Medicine Hat Women's Shelter Society, so I know firsthand the great work you do, so I would thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
It was great to come down for your grand opening. That was, it was a good day. You had everybody there, so.
Yeah, it was wonderful.
And our playground does look good down there. That's where everybody was for the pictures and that, so. I did gloat a little bit about that.
Good, as you should have. Yes, it was wonderful. We had the premier down and Emily Wright, and we had Minister Turtin was down as well. So we did, we did do a lot of bragging. So it was a wonderful day. So, and I said to you, I would welcome all of you to come back. If you have time, we'd love to show you the space overall.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
You have a good day, too. We don't need to hear. We can go on without you. We're removing the Code of Conduct. 12.1. Minister Hogan, yeah, Lloyd had to leave for this. He's...
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. 12.1 is regarding the removal of the Council Code of Conduct by law 2025-07. As a result of the recent amendments enacted through Bill 50 corresponding to the changes to the Municipal Government Act, all provisions relating to the Council Code of Conduct have been repealed by the provincial government. Official repealing of the bylaw is not required. Administration simply needs to remove it from the bylaw index, as it has already been automatically invalidated by provincial legislation. Reference to the municipal, provincial, and federal legislations, Bill 50, Municipal Affairs of Statutes Amendment, Act 2025, MGA Section 3, Part 5, Division 1.1, Section 146.1, Code of Conduct. Administration's recommendation is that Council direct administration remove bylaw 2020-07 Council Code of Conduct from the index of Council bylaws.
Any questions on this one? Robyn's moving to resend. No questions? Vote. What? Keith, can you vote? Okay, that's carried. 13.1.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is regarding correspondence received since the last correspondence, or since the last council meeting. The only correspondence we have received is from the Minister of Transportation, Mr. Devin Dreschen, regarding Highway 320. The letter should be in your package for your perusal.
Okay, now, from our course earlier, we shouldn't be receiving... Okay, now from our course earlier, we shouldn't be receiving these as information. So... Is there any questions on it? No questions? Just please add them to the minutes that they, we looked at them. Reeve and counselor reports. I don't think too many people have had very... Any meetings yet, but I did do the Mares and Reeves on Friday. Not a lot going on there with the election. There's some stuff brought forward. There was some discussion on the strike and what's going on there for the teachers. Boy, we've got some MLAs that have put a lot of work into that. Holy cow. But, besides that, there wasn't a lot. I was re-elected as vice chair on it. They asked me to be chair and I turned it down, but I couldn't get out of vice chair either, so. Randy Taylor is the chair and I'm the vice chair for Mares and Reeves. Other than that, I bent all the other stuff with you guys, so I'll just... We don't have to go... Does anybody have a board that they need to talk about? Shane?
Yeah, I drove up to Fort McLeod there on Thursday and attended the Highway 320 meeting. We had a representative from BC there with the Highway, Highway 3. And he said, "They're not going to do nothing. They're broke. The province is broken. The cost of twinning anything on their side going through the mountains." So he said, "Anything we do on our side, we're going to hit two lanes as soon as you hit the border." Darren Davidson did give an update. You know, the negotiations in our part with the landowners is ongoing. Bow Island is still up in the air. They're about going around or through. So he said, "If it comes to push or shove, that they just may split it and do part and leave the town out for now." You know, they, they can go either way. The negotiations with Kynai for twinning through the reserve there, he said, "It's going about the same speed as melting of the glaciers." And, yeah, they're just, a lot of work, a lot of... It's a big, big expense to twin through Blairmore. And they're still working on that, they're engineering on that. They bought some property already. He said they pretty well own à la Frank. So we said, "Maybe they should name it now Darren," but he wouldn't go for that. But no, it's ongoing. The piece they're doing right now is on schedule. And he did remind us to tell people that, no, they will not be an opening section by section. It'll be the whole piece when they're done. If you drive by now, they are getting paved up to what they got based. And that's ready. Their, next year, there will be a hole. Once they get it all covered, they will do a final lift on the whole thing. So they still are figuring and still are in schedule to have it open for the end of next year. And that was about it.
Looked this way, did any, you guys have anything? Not committee? You're good?
Lot of training. Lot of training.
Any committees this way? Michelle?
Yeah, well, not necessarily committees. I'm just saying, I was approached by Melody from Red Cliff FCSS. And she would like me to go in there and give a presentation to their new council, which I'm thinking is going to be on the 24th or the 8th of December. I don't know, one of those two council meetings. So that was all.
Of course, El Quarter. Anyways, I just, first of all, I'd like to thank all the phone calls I got that day of the fire from the counselors. It was really good, very supportive. I appreciate it, especially from Robin, who offered, "I could take my livestock down there if I needed to." Appreciate that. I appreciated the CAO calling me and telling me about it because I was out of cell service. And, but I had, oh, I don't know, I sat at Bullset, I'll bet you, for 35 minutes just answering calls and text messages and ranchers pulling up, asking what they can do and what's happening. And so it was good and I just appreciated it. It was, it opened up a lot of eyes for the cabin owners. And now they're starting a new project. They want a siren, for sure now. They were, at the meeting I was at the other day, they were complaining because the park never came and said anything to them. And I wasn't in the park, but I had smoke at my place, not much. But they said, "On top of the hill there, you could barely see." So I'm not sure how bad of a smoke they had. But no one ever came and talked to them, so. And they're planning on a town hall meeting now. And they are thinking of inviting Justin Wright. And they're going to write a letter to Danielle Smith, apparently, to see if she can come or her minister. And they sure would like the CAO and Reeve to come when they have it. But I don't know when it's going to be. And if they're going to do all this, I don't imagine it's going to be soon. But they want to get Peter there, but they don't think he'll show up. That's it, just the new program they're doing.
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, we don't need a motion anymore to receive that for information, so. It'll be in the, it'll be in the minutes, so. All right, so we need to move to go enclosed. Keith is moving to go enclosed. Vote?
Okay, so I had to have names in last week for who is going to these meetings. So I just put the deputy Reeve down and the C A O and myself. So before next RMA we'll figure out who's gonna go to what on which ones we're going to so we can have it all organized and set up. Didn't wasn't trying to step on anybody's toes, just didn't know who was going and we didn't have council meeting till today, so. I got it all in for this one and we'll figure it all out for next RMA.
Well, I'm disappointed I wanted to go.
Yeah, I know you're.
He should really go at RMA.
Yeah. Alright, so I need a motion for sixteen point one. Motion is to, oh, you got it up there? Council points Kyle Forbes, egg service board. Michelle's making a motion. Any questions on it? It's carried scholarship. Do we have that one ready to go? Lloyd's making the motion. The council award nine one thousand dollars Cypress County scholarships to select applicants and increase previous two, what the heck?
Two scholarships council.
I'm looking through the room on my. Funded from our council other. Any questions? Carried. And the June nineteenth I M C meetings. Just. Who wants to move those? Robbins.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we have to accept minutes on those for. Robbins moving those? Now they can go back to the board chain. That's carried.
Back to the board.
Yeah, I M C board.
Yeah, the June nineteenth minutes are the ones that were actually approved at the last I M C. Those are the formal minutes. The others are just the draft.
Okay, everybody's good?
Yes, sir.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, sir.